Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Prattville City Council Tuesday, November 1st, 2016 meeting. We do have a public hearing agenda tonight. We have one item. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the robe, please.
Counselor Striplin. Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
I call this public hearing to order. We have one item. Item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing now, I declare a public hearing is closed on that. As such, you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance of the American flag and remain standing for our invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O gracious God, we come tonight as umpteenth as we know how. Father, we want to say thank you for being so good and merciful to each and every one of us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Lord, we further go and pray for those who are less fortunate than we are, and we pray that we help someone else along the way. Those who are fighting in harm's ways, protect them, and be with their families, oh Lord. Now, Lord, be with everyone who is assembled here tonight and their families. Be with this governing body as we discuss issues of this city. Direct our tongue and direct our minds, oh Lord, as we proceed. We thank you, and we give you the glory and honor and the praise. We pray you'll direct us safely to our destination. In your name we pray. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the robe, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
I call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. Our character trait of the month is gratefulness, just demonstrating appreciation to others for what I have and how they have helped me. Very good character trait. At this time, we have approval of minutes, public hearing in the City Council meeting, October 18th, 2016. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. At this time in our agenda, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? Mayor, if you may, report.
Yes, sir. If I might have a couple of points of privilege.
Yes.
Would like to offer that to our Senator and Representative.
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. President, council members, I appreciate a moment to come before you tonight and honor our outgoing Council President Willie Wood. Willie's been a stable force on this council for many years, and I've been able to work with him both from the county commission point of view and from the city council point of view, and it's always good when you have a leader that's stable, not too emotional, but not too low, just always there, steady, steady as she goes, and I just appreciate that in his leadership over the years. So, tonight, I have a resolution from the Senate that I would like to read in honor of Council President Wood. Whereas highest commendations are herein proudly presented to Councilman Willie Wood Jr. for providing 28 years of outstanding service to the Prattville City Council, and whereas while serving six four-year terms as a Prattville City Council member, Willie Wood Jr., who was elected, was first elected to office in 1988, has compiled an extensive record of excellence that includes strongly advocating for the city to address the issues of unpaved streets and developing a fair grading system to address paving streets in general, hosting a yearly community event at North Highland Park to help sponsor student scholarships, or assist other worthwhile community organizations, helping establish the first Boys and Girls Club in Prattville, being instrumental in the establishment of a facility that provides quality programs and services for children, and being instrumental in the passing of legislation that changed council meetings from day to night. And whereas notably Willie Wood Jr. has contributed expert guidance and leadership to the Prattville City Council as president from 1996 until 2000, and from 2012 until 2016, he has also served on numerous committees for the Prattville City Council during his years in office, and whereas his affiliations have included the Alabama Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, the Prattville Chamber of Commerce, the Toga County Board of Education, High Hopes Advisory Council, and the Leadership Alabama Program. Whereas Willie Wood Jr. has earned numerous honors, including the first Prattville Seventh Day Adventist Outstanding Leadership Award, 1993, Man of Distinction, Man of the Year, the Toga County Black Heritage Association Leadership Award, the Prattville Progress Statesman of the Year selection, and the Alabama League of Municipalities Distinguished Service Award. Whereas he is a faithful and devoted member of the First Missionary Baptist Church of Prattville, where he serves as a trustee, board chair, and a member of the male chorus. And whereas through the years Willie Wood Jr. has earned widespread respect for his tireless dedication and exceptional abilities, his unwavering commitment to excellence in public service reflects immense credit upon the city of Prattville and the entire state of Alabama. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Senate of the Legislature of Alabama that Willie Wood Jr. is honored and commended, and this resolution is offered to him in the highest tribute, along with sincere best wish for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, if we might, could we get you to come down and get a photo with Representative Beckman and the mayor and I? This is only going to happen one time in 28 years. We need to document it.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Paul Beckman, State Representative from the House. I did a little bit different this year. This is one of the rare occasions that I have done this. I've been in office now for six years, and I had the luxury of meeting our mayor eight years ago. I was not elected official, and he came over to my house, and I think he got the wrath of God. Eight years ago, I met with Ray Bowles in his basement, and Ray was contemplating on running for city council, and I was going to run for city council, and I got beat at that time. And two years later, of course, I got elected to state representative. But I'm here today as a resolution offering to three people: Willie Wood for his distinguished service, Ray Bowles for the eight years that he's done, and for Gary Whiteside that has been appointed and sat in for the last two years. People that run for office or hold office are special people. They want to basically put themselves on the line as far as to help people. It is not an aphrodisiac for power or for money. It's a common good to help people. I firmly believe that, and the people that I have met that's on this council have always demonstrated that. So saying that, I don't think mine is going to be as long as Senator Chambliss as far as Mr. Wood is concerned. Mr. Wood has dedicated his 28 years here, and he has done a remarkable job. But what I have here today is HIR 157, which commends Willie Wood Jr., Gary L. Whiteside, and Ray C. Bowles for their distinguished service to the Prattville City Council. I think it was only proper that all three of y'all be recognized for your time regardless of the length of time. Mr. Wood, I think rather than repeating what Senator Bowles, I mean Senator Chambliss has distinguished, I would like to start with Bowles because he has covered everything else as far as your commendation.
Yes, sir.
Whereas Ray C. Bowles is an entrepreneur whose business sense and understanding of what it takes to create jobs and the negative impact of government in reference to can and have on the economy has helped him most effectively serve his constituents as a member of the Prattville City Council. Since first being elected to office in 2007, he has constantly demonstrated a strong sense of character, honor, and integrity shaped by his strong Christian faith and family values. Mr. Whiteside has profound an impact on the lives of his constituents since beginning the appointment to fill the vacant district of council members sent out on January, seated on January 6th of 2015 by Prattville City Council. All right, therefore, through their service of the Prattville City Council, Willie Wood Jr., Ray C. Bowles, and Gary L. Whiteside have earned widespread respect for their tireless dedication, their abilities, their unwavering commitment, and excellence in public service reflecting immense credit upon the city of Prattville and the entire state of Alabama. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Willie Wood Jr., Ray C. Bowles, and Gary L. Whiteside are honored and commended, and this resolution is offered to them in the highest tribute along with the sincere best wishes for continued success in their future endeavors. This is by the State of Alabama, House of Representatives, and it is my pleasure to offer each one of you all of one.
Thank you for your service. My wife told me to eat supper tonight before I came here, but if I might continue the point of privilege, and at this point in time, actually have the Exchange Club people to come up. They have a award for another one of our dedicated servants, partners of Prattville. Turn the lecture over to them at this time.
My name is Cindy Browder from this lovely group of people here, and we're here today to actually honor the servants, we want to call them humble servants, of this great city and this county. And so we thought that we would come tonight and honor them with special recognition for the service that they portray on a daily basis where they go above and beyond the call of duty. So I'm going to call out these gentlemen, and we're going to begin with the sheriff, and the presentation will come from Sheriff Joe Sedinger.
Investigator, he really went above and beyond on two robbery cases, two separate robbery cases. One of them is getting a fingerprint off of a bullet, solved that case, and the other one is getting a DNA off of a paper towel to bag out the way. Like presenting with this plaque.
Our second plaque and award will go to Corporal Jason Kephart from the Prattville Police Department. And our next one will go to Officer Jeff Mulligan. And our last award, but definitely not least, will go to Battalion Chief Andrew Ellison of the Fire Department. And Chief Brown will be accepting that for him.
Chief Ellison had gone above and beyond the duty. He was our firefighter of the year with the Fire Department also, but I'd like to
Thank you all again for allowing us to honor these great servants during your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank the Exchange Club because its achievements, awards like that, that really help motivate people to continue on and actually help our community to be such a much, much better place. At this point in time, I'd like to deliver the State of the City address. I brought my notebook full of notes, and so if I might at this time. Partners and stakeholders, four years ago, we opened this quadrillionium and effectively tonight, it comes to a close. I believe that Daniel Pratt would be proud of Prattville's evolution since 1839. Pratt was known as the birthplace of industry in Alabama. Pratt and his works are known locally, statewide, and globally. I mention this to make several points. We have evolved from a manufacturing village to a destination center, a destination for food and shopping. We've become a destination for outdoor activity, especially on Otoga Creek. We embrace the following philosophy: Our role of government is to provide an environment for private enterprise to flourish. When you couple this with our proximity to the interstate, our relationship with Maxwell Air Force Base, and our citizens who remain friendly and welcoming to each and to all our visitors, you have a recipe for success. We have a very dedicated workforce. They are dedicated to serve. Our city council and this administration have been working as a team, as a partnership. Our county colleagues in both county commissions, as well as our Board of Education, are working to improve this region. We're also blessed to have citizens that are patriotic and willing to give back to their, our community. Our financial footprint is firm. We can attribute this improved financial status to our citizens, our employees, and our city council. Our financial improvement has been noted by standard employers, as well as the Government Finance Officers Association with two consecutive certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This award is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. Passage of our budget, which is based off of our previous year's actuals, we document our growth. It proves that our opportunities for success are ours to determine, but we can only do it as partners, as partners of Prattville. We have the opportunity to make capital investments, such as this year's road and bridge project, to help cultivate our human capital, just as Daniel Pratt did in 1839. We have survived the economic downturn. Over the course of the past year, 34 new businesses established in Prattville, and we experienced five industrial expansions. This growth of new and existing businesses resulted in 272 full-time jobs created and 500 to 600 construction and maintenance-related jobs in Otoga, Prattville. The total capital investment from private business sources were approximately 340 million into our community. Thank you, City Council, for all of your dedicated, hard work. We have poised our community to continue this positive progression, to further increase our quality of life through services, infrastructure, and amenities as we retain all that makes us uniquely Prattville. Thank you for being a part of this team, as partners of Prattville. As we move forward in the next quadrillionium, there will be a slight change of the guard, but because of the dedication of this council, I see that we will all have a very, very bright future here in Daniel Pratt's community. With that said, I'd like to take this opportunity to present a certificate of achievement. Mr. President, I would like to continue with that point of privilege, and if I might ask Mr. Doug Mosley and Daniel Oakley to come up. While they're coming up, I'd like to say that, you know, no one person can do everything. It takes a team to achieve greatness and excellence. As in this case, there was a tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of hard work done on the part of our finance director, Doug Mosley, along with guidance, a lot of hard work done by our auditor from Jackson Thornton, who was represented tonight by Daniel Oakley. Oakley, if you have the presentation there?
I do.
Read it for us.
Sure. The Government Finance offers us association. This is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that is presented to the city of Prattville, Alabama, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2015.
Hopefully, if you'll accept it because of all your hard work, and I'd like to give you a round of applause on that one.
Yeah, remember now, I got my binder. My time as the finance director is drawing to a close. I think I may have to come one more time to do the financial report next meeting, but as this body has been the council for most of the time I've been the finance director, I just want to thank every one of you for the opportunity to do this job. I came in six years ago, very green and untested. We've definitely gone through a lot, but I just want to thank all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's for certain. You've done an excellent job and wish you the best. Well, I guess I need to continue the point of privilege. And if I might, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to the monitors around the room, and at this time, I'd like to come up and present this plaque to Gary L. Whiteside, District 5, for your service to the city of Prattville and our community, January 6th, 2015 to November 7th, 2016, and I certainly do appreciate you and all your hard work and dedication. Job well done. Thank you. He threw me a curve there because I was actually going to come up there to him, so I guess, I don't know what to do now. But as I come up around this way, look at here, another plaque. I guess it's the evening for plaques and ribbons and the changing of the guard. You have one more meeting after this one. Your wife called, you have lunch, I mean supper tonight, so you got that meeting afterwards. Mr. Ray Bowles, District 6, thank you for your service to the city of Prattville and our community, November 3rd, 2008 to November 7th, 2016. Again, there's still a few more days left. Today's November 1st, so you're still a very needed employee of the city of Prattville and a partner of Prattville, but thank you for all your hard work here. Thank you for your friendship. You know, I know there's been times that you and I have agreed, and there's been many times that you and I have had to agree to disagree, and, but I'll have to say that all the hard work that this council has done, the city of Prattville is better, is better now than it was when you got here. So, thank you for all your hard work and your dedication. And I also did forget, I did forget, Mr. Gary, I have a mayor's coin for you also, but if you'll take this one, I certainly do appreciate you and wish you God's peace. Here, if you'll stand up, I can get one more picture. You are handing this coin to me. Okay, I guess that's the end of my point of privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, found another plaque. Willie L. Wood Jr., District 2, Council President. Thank you for your service to the city of Prattville and our community, October 3rd, 1988, November 7th, 2016. Mr. Wood, you served beside my father, you served beside me. You have made this community better. You have brought a lot to this community, and I want to take this time to say thank you. Thank you for what you have done, the sacrifices that you have made to make this community a lot better place, and it most certainly is. So, thank you, my friend, my brother.
Thank you.
I haven't been able to watch those, but I tell you what, I saw a few earlier that you've been around a while, and that has been a good thing. Thank you.
Talking about that lady.
Okay. Let's see, it's 6:29. I don't know. Mr. President, that's it in my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who has been, who has assembled themselves here tonight. Senator Chambliss, Representative Beckman, thank you. It was a surprise, wasn't looking for it, never looked for an award, but they come, I guess, when you work. So, thank you all. Congratulations to the Police Department, Honorees, Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Department. Thank the Exchange Club for that, and to my peers to my left, both with Counselor Whiteside and Counselor Bowles. Congratulations, and as we go through, I will speak further at the end of this meeting concerning all of you all. With that said, we'll go into our meeting. At this time, we have a report from council on special At this time, we have a report from council on special committees. Council Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Council Brown?
Yes, sir.
Council Stern?
Yes, sir.
Council Whiteside?
Yes, sir.
Council Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Council Boone?
Yes, sir.
We do have a consent agenda to consider tonight. We have four items to consider. Number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weekly lots abated per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. Number two is a resolution to declare various weekly lots to be a public nuisance, order their abatement, and set a public hearing for Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. Number three is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to Blazin' Wings Incorporated during business as Buffalo Wild Wings. Number four is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a lounge retail liquor Class One license to Twenty-Six Fifty LLC during business at Dreams Bar. Do we have a motion to place these four items on a consent agenda?
Consent.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor placing these items on a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. And these items have been placed on the consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on any of these four items? All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Our next item on the agenda is an ordinance to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the last full weekend of February twenty seventeen, as authorized by Act two thousand and twelve dash two fifty-six, generally referred to as the state severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday legislation. Council Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of Prattville, Alabama as follows. Section one, in conformity with the Provisions Act two thousand and twelve dash two fifty-six, enacted by the Alabama Legislature during the two thousand and twelve regular session, providing for a state severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at twelve oh one a.m. on Friday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and ending at twelve midnight on the following Sunday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Section two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules, as provided by Act two thousand and twelve dash two fifty-six, except that the time period shall only be as specified in section one above, and not for all years thereafter. Section three, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By rules, this is an ordinance of permanent nature. Rules must be suspended in order to be considered. Have a motion to suspend.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule signify by raising your right hand. And the rules have been suspended. Will there be any discussion? All in favor of adoption of this ordinance signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Number two is an ordinance also to amend City of Prattville Code, Chapter one oh five Buildings and Building Regulation, Article One, and General Section one oh five dash twenty-six, four, to establish the collection of the Construction Industry Craft Training Program, CICTP fee, as mandated by Alabama Act two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight. Council Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas on June third, two thousand and fifteen, the Alabama Legislature enacted Alabama Act two thousand dash, two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight, which created a constitutional industry craft training program to be administered by the Alabama Craft Training Board for the purpose of funding training programs for the development of quality workforce to support the construction industry in the state of Alabama. And whereas, effective October first, two thousand and sixteen, Act two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight required the city to tender a fee to the state of Alabama in the amount of equal to one dollar for every one thousand dollars of non-residential construction work permitted with the city of Prattville. Whereas the Act two thousand and fifteen three oh eight constitutes as unmandated, imposed by the state of Alabama Legislature. Whereas it is response to Act two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight, the city is required to increase its non-residential construction permit fees by the amount required to be transmitted to the state under the act in order to maintain the city current level of construction permit revenue. Be it ordained by the City Council of City of Prattville that the Code of Chapter one oh five Building and Building Registration, Article One, and General Section one oh five dash twenty-six, miscellaneous permits and fees is hereby amended as follows. Pursuant to Alabama Act two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight, the city shall assess a fee on all non-residential construction work permit within the city in the amount of one dollar for every one thousand dollars of said non-residential construction work permits. The fees shall be collected by the city and shall be electronically remitted monthly to the Department of Finance, Division of Construction Management by the twentieth day of the month following the issue of the applications prepared as required by Act two thousand and fifteen three oh eight. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the collection of said fees in the effect of October first, two thousand and sixteen, in accordance with Act two thousand and fifteen dash three oh eight. And all previous collections are hereby ratified and affirmed. All ordinance or parts of ordinance in any matter conflicting here with the hereby repeal. The ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as law by requirement. So moved.
Have a motion on the floor? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance, all sort of rules must be suspended in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend?
Second.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule signify by raising your right hand. And the rules have been suspended on this item. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Number three is a resolution to appoint City Treasurer/Finance Director for the remainder of the two thousand and twelve quadrant millennium. Council Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has a need to appoint a City Treasurer/Finance Director. And whereas, Section eleven dash forty-three dash three provides for the appointment of a City Treasurer who shall hold the office for the term of the council, and until his successor is elected and qualified. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Daniel F. Oakley be appointed as City Treasurer/Finance Director of the City of Prattville at pay grade four fourteen dash oh one for the remainder of the two thousand and twelve quadrant millennium, and until his successor is duly appointed. Be it further resolved that the salary for said position is approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the Prattville City Council. So moved, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. At this time, we have comments from persons present on any item they wish to make comments on. Please come up to the microphone. See, and Mayor, you have, yes, see one in the back. I have one in the back, but, yeah.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, clerk, and the city council, and Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Whiteside for his service on the Building and Fire Department Committee. Also, Mr. Bowles, for your chairmanship on both of those committees. We moved a long way during that time. I also swore an oath to this city almost thirty years ago, and the majority has been spent with you, Mr. Wood. I thank you for your dedication, your commitment, and your friendship. History does tell that a statesman is a politician that has been dead for some time. I think you've proven that wrong, as serving as a statesman. I've been honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you. Well, at this time, I actually like to bring Mr. Oakley up. He has been voted on by this body, and while he's coming up, just explain a little bit maybe to the, to the public here that while, he will probably be back on the next agenda because our two thousand and twelve, sixteen quadrant millennium is ending, and as we move into the next one, so he'll probably have to be re-voted on again. But as we all know, we all have jobs, and he had to, to give a notice, so that way he can come join our family. So not only is he going to be joining this family, I think he has some other news in the future where he's going to be getting married in the near future. So his livelihood here in the city of Prattville will be here for quite some time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce to you our new finance director, Mr. Oakley.
Well, I just wanted to thank you all for the confidence shown in me by this appointment. We're going to do great things for the city of Prattville. I look forward to working with you, and I'm anxious to get to work.
Start date?
Start date will be November fourteenth, two weeks from today.
Anyway, well, thank you. Look forward to seeing you, meeting you more then.
Thank you.
In closing, again, I'd like to say thank you to this whole council as we round off this quadrant millennium. But again, Mr. Whiteside, thank you. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your work here. Mr. Bowles, thank you for your friendship and your dedication and your work here. Mr. Wood, thank you for your friendship and for your dedicated work here, and you are the statesman of Prattville. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I would like to announce, for those that you are not aware, that Ms. Patty Vanderwall was selected as the two thousand and sixteen Spirit of Spinners Award recipient this year. So congratulations to Ms. Vanderwall. Gary, Ray, and Willie, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you for all the opportunities you provided for teaching and learning, and best wishes.
Thank you. Council Brown?
Council President Wood just like to thank you for your steadfast leadership. We have all enjoyed that, and thank you all for your friendship, and it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you.
Council Sterns?
Yes, sir.
Council Whiteside?
Yes, sir.
Council Bowles?
No, I gotta say something. I mean, this is it for me, baby. I'm out of here. I told somebody, this job's sort of like buying a boat. You love it when you buy it, and you love it when you sell it. The rest of the time is just, costs you a lot of money. But honestly, it has been a privilege to work for the city, for my constituents.
For my mayor, you'd be great for this council. Y'all have been great. Just from what we started to a rat, it was scary. As a business owner, as a resident, I got to see things that y'all didn't get to see. It was scary. And because of the leadership of the mayor and President Wood and this council, and this city, and the residents, we made it through it. I love everybody. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Council Bowles. Council Boone?
Yes, sir. I just want to say my farewells, and thank you very much for your leadership. When I came on here, you have been a true mentor to me, and I appreciate it. I like the gentle way of leading that you have. You are a shepherd and my Christian brother, and I appreciate that, as you have led me gently, and I really appreciate that. I've really enjoyed working with Councilor Bowles, and I hope that his replacement wears some steel-toed boots, because I tend to be a foot stomper that y'all cannot see underneath here, but there's a lot of foot stomping going on over here. And so whomever sits in this chair, hopefully will, will not cause me to stomp feet next time. Ray and I have a great relationship of elbowing and stomping. And Councilor Whiteside, you have done a great job coming on board in the middle of something that you didn't really even know what you were getting into, and you've learned quickly, and you've represented your district well, and I respect you, and I thank you for your service. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. I don't want to miss anyone before I make final comments. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please. State name and address for the clerk, ma'am.
I'm Mary Virginia Harris, one thirty-three East Sixth Street. The councilman, Wood, I knew you before you were elected, and got to know you even better during the twenty-eight years you served as my councilman in District Two. You are a hard worker and always tried to do the best you could as District Two and the community. Always had a pleasant attitude when dealing with people in your district and abroad. I respected you as my councilman, but you are much more than that to me. You are more like a son to me, because your mother, Miss Elmari Wood, and I were best of friends. She was here for elections and swearing ends. Your father, Mr. Willie Lee Wood Senior, was here for the first election and swearing end. You are going out with history. I thank you for your dedicated service, and may God continue to bless you.
Would there be anyone else? Let's make these two announcements.
My name is Barbara Robinson. I live at one twenty-three White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. I would just like to say to the mayors, to all the councilmen, especially to, I always call him my councilman, Councilman Willie Wood, Jr. He has been a great legacy for us. I've been knowing him for years. We were classmates. I remember when we was in school, he always had a pencil and a pen, paper and pen. He always, always carried that paper, and he always had a pencil. I never knew that, doing that in part, as we was growing up in high school, all the way through school, we went from elementary school all the way through high school together, that he was going to be a great legacy for our generation. And I thank God for him, and I thank God for because of the positive attitude he showed, no matter what other people might have said or done, he always kept that positive attitude. He always showed a Christian-type mentality, and that's what our city needed. And I see how well he worked with all the mayors that was here when he started, and I am just grateful. I didn't want to just not say anything, but I am very proud of him, because he showed something that, and portrayed what God has said for us to love people. He always wanted to do something to help someone. And, and that is a great thing, when no matter what, when someone throws stones at you, that you can continue to smile and still get that offering helping hand. And that's what we need. He had great gratitude, and we are very, very proud of him. I know I am. I didn't write anything out, I didn't know I was going to be able to speak, but I just want to say that we have a great legacy that have, that we have made history. This is history for us, and I thank God, and I think that, thank God for him showing the image of God, and showing he is a child that loves people. It doesn't, he didn't look at color, he just knew that people, and there were so many things that he have done to help the Prattville community. We have really, really grown. I remember when out by where the golf courts, all those I remember when out by where the golf courts, all those places, cotton fields, all out there, and see, a lot of people does not know, if you're not from Prattville, you want to understand how the growth came. And I am so proud of how Prattville have grown, because like I said, all those places out there where Dollar General and Big T and all those places out there, all those places used to be cotton fields. And so we have really, really came a long ways, and I know of your father, I know that he started out this legacy, but you fulfilled it. It's just like Solomon. Sometimes, you know, the father starts out, but the son is the one that is chosen, and you are one of the chosen one, and we thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is that it? The City Council Organization Meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 7, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. in these chambers. The next regular City Council Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 15, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. Ladies and gentlemen, it was the first Monday in November 1988, a 35-year-old young curly black hair, and black young man began a new journey on the Prattville City Council. 28 years later, and elderly, 63-year-old short gray hair with some black still holding on, ends this journey. I want to thank God for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I want to also thank the citizens of District 2 and the City of Prattville for their support. I have been blessed to serve under the administration of four mayors and seven sets of councils. I thank you all and every city employee for their service to this city. On this journey, we encounter mountains and valleys, rivers and plains, highs and lows, joys and sorrows, conflict and loss, heartache and solitude. Through it all, I've learned to trust in the Lord, pray and seek his guidance. Many people paved the way for me to have the opportunity I have been afforded, such as Dr. Martinair King Jr., nationally and internationally known, local citizens and heroes, such as Mr. Dan Hauser, Mr. Frank Gibson, Reverend J.D. Milner, Ms. Sally Hatnot, and yes, of course, Mr. Willie L. Wood Sr. Thank you all, especially Dad. I'm so glad you and Mom lived to see me become the first black to be elected to the Prattville City Council, as you was the first black candidate for office in this county. As this journey comes to an end tonight, I want to congratulate Marcus Jackson on being elected to represent District 2 and all others who was elected to serve for the next four years. The challenges and opportunities you face can be met confidently if you honor God and rely on his never-failing presence. As I've always said in my serving, you must agree to disagree and respectfully keep moving forward. Thank you all, and God bless each of you in this city as Council President Willie L. Wood Jr. moves on, humble, grateful, and thankful. God bless you. With that being said, at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, God bless.